Good evening. Welcome to the March 8th meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Kate Potter and I call this meeting to order at 6:38 PM. Information on how to join school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Before we move forward in the meeting, is anyone here for public comment? Nope, seeing no one. We will move forward. I will open the public hearing for the budget presentation and hand it over to Dawn.
Thank you. Just give a minute for all the machinery to power up.
So the budget presentation you're going to see is actually the budget presentation that we presented to the two towns last week, so there won't be any new information, just so it'll be a reinforcement of the information already provided.
So our assumptions remain the same. We're looking at regular school operations in person five days a week with level enrollment. We provided to the school committee the five-year projections which show that we are basically seeing the same, like 10 kid quadrants for the next five years, so that's a good thing for budgeting purposes. We follow both towns' budget guidance. If you recall, Dover's is level service while Sherburne's is level funded, so we are able to meet those two needs in our budget that we're presenting tonight. We continue to align our budget with the district's strategic plan, so some of the goals that we have in the strategic plan you will see rolling out in our budget. I'm thinking of the SEL component where we've added the guidance counselors. We continue to look at improving our buildings. So we always make sure that what we do on a day-to-day basis just does circle back to the strategic plan that we've all agreed that we want the school district to move forward with. In addition, we're continuing to assess our student needs in the post-COVID environment, and this week hopefully we really are in a post-COVID environment given that we're mask optional. Keep in mind that we are not including additional costs in our operating budget for these particular needs because that's where we have the ESAR funds available to us until September of '24, so if things arise, that's what we're using the ESAR money for. So there's nothing in our current budget that is a reaction to COVID. So our budget drivers, again, these remain same from year to year, but payroll and related benefits actually represent 80% of our operating budget. We're in the last year in fiscal year '23 of all of our employment agreements. This year, in fiscal year '23, we have COLA increases between 2 and 2.25 across all bargaining units, and keep in mind that the matrix for educators also has increases ranging from 4 to 13%. We are adding several new staffing positions in '23. For clarification purposes, I've added that number in. If you recall, we had a little bit of discussion about that in our last meeting, so it's 3.8 FTEs. And just to refresh the committee's memory on what those positions are, 0.8 are regular education teachers. We had a 0.6 math because we're increasing the curriculum and also keeping our class sizes in the lower level math to where it needs to be, and 0.2 English to sort of lighten the load of our ninth grade freshman classes, which is the base of your writing instruction. But nicely, what we can say is we had salary savings from retirements and staffing changes that actually exceeded the additional payroll cost that we're adding. I look at that as taking money that we have and reinvesting it. So if you have a CD that matures, sometimes you reinvestment, and this particular year we needed to take those funds and reinvest them in new positions. But the beauty of that was that our payroll increase was really the cost of the contract, not the cost of the new unemployed plus the contract. Obviously, the other great news, because this has been a large increase in previous years, was in our healthcare cost. And with the changes that are taking place in our healthcare provider, with Fallon leaving the marketplace and Blue Cross coming in as a low-cost provider, it actually has benefited us because it also had a reaction to lower our existing Blue Cross plans, which we do have. It's our second-largest subscribed healthcare plan, and Blue Cross, if you're on that plan next year, you're seeing a 20% decrease in your premiums because it's all showing you the volume, volume purchasing, what it can do to your pricing. We're continuing to fund our OPEB liability trust. We'll be fully phased in with our cost share savings in fiscal year '24. When you get to your statements for this month, you'll see that I did encumber $125,000 contribution, so we are exceeding a minimum of $100,000 because we do have a little extra that we can pick up there with changes in retirement subscribers. And Norfolk County Retirement Assessment is also one of our budget drivers, and they did a new actuarial report in fiscal year '22 that actually was beneficial to us. They went back and recalibrated it. They also used some of their reserves to offset pension costs, so we are operating below our '21 actual cost even though we're seeing a 7% increase. We're continuing to trend budget and spend smarter in all of our operating accounts, but we were careful with trend budgeting this year because our actuals for the last two years haven't quite been true operations because of the various hybrid plans, the closure. So we treaded lightly on that. It'll give us an opportunity next year to look at some of those accounts closer. And then, as we talked about student enrollment, obviously that impacts the annual assessment for the towns. The fiscal year '23 operating and assessment percentages had a small swing towards Sherburne in fiscal year '23. In addition, I always like to highlight that what we don't have control over either is how the state calculates the minimum local contribution. That remains sort of steady, split between the two towns, so there really was no impact this year. Some years, we've seen larger impacts. So where do we stand? So our overall budget increase was about 2.44%. That was a little higher than last year, which was less than 1%. If you look at the impact on the towns, Dover's assessment increased by 2% and Sherburne's assessment increased by 2.8%. I just continue actually to remind everyone that their fiscal year '22 town assessments were reduced by a little over $600,000 due to savings that we realized in fiscal year '21, so we were in excess of our E&amp;D once it was certified, so that money actually was deducted from their February assessment payments, and again, you're going to see that reflected in your statements this month. So just looking at the big picture, here's your revenues. You can definitely see that we rely heavily on our towns to fund our schools. It's about 81% of our funding comes from our two towns, 11% from the state, and then we've got 2% of some minor little things. Refresh your memory, too, the athletic fees that increase there reflects the addition of the coaches and the increase in the fees to cover those coaches that will help us not have the volunteer coaching donation situation going forward. We are using $110,000 of E&amp;D, which represents the Chapter 71 reimbursement that's coming in higher this year than we budgeted. So remember, we always like to tie the use of E&amp;D to something that would have impacted the assessments from the previous year. So had we known we were going to get that amount of Chapter 71, the assessments for fiscal year '22 would have been lower, so we're giving them that credit in the following year of fiscal year '23. And looking at the expenditures, then you can see where we talk about salaries and benefits constituting about 83%. Our other expenditures are everything else that is like what happens during the school day. Transportation is both our regular ed transportation and a little bit of special education for in district, and then obviously the building and grounds is everything we need to keep the campus here up and running here at the region. The good news is in our debt service is that our debt will be fully paid off in fiscal year '25. The debt that we're continuing to pay off is actually for this building, the middle Any questions on the operating budget? We don't have any community members, so actually we'll just keep going. So just refreshing your memory on our fiscal year '23 capital request, the projects that we have included for next year are the roof restoration for the middle school, including the gym, and Linkwes Commons. We are looking at some boiler replacements, a security system upgrade for Linkwes Commons, which was a recommendation from the NEAS report. We're still exploring looking at a classroom dividing wall in the middle school to provide additional classroom, and we're continuing to replace floors in classrooms at the high school. If you recall, at your last meeting, you approved $1.575 million for the roof projects that will be funded through IMA. For the next two Thursday nights, we'll actually be attending the Board of Selectmen, Select Board and the Board of Selectmen meetings to have them also vote because it's actually approved all by you, so you all will actually sign the IMA along with all the selectmen from both towns. So we formally take it to their boards to be approved, and we have that coming up March 10th and March 17th. Keep in mind also that that then goes on to the ballot because both towns are going to be borrowing for that, so we will have final approval really after Dover's election.
It goes on the ballot, not the town meeting?
No, it goes on the, except the town meeting and the ballot. It's a ballot question, yes. The remaining projects, which right now we're holding estimates for about a little under $370,000, will be brought forward to you as we have estimates to actually take care of those projects. I'm thinking probably May and June we'll have some estimates. We have a consultant working with us right now on the boilers, which is actually the largest project that we have, and that is not time-sensitive, which just gives us some time up until June to have you approve the use of E&amp;D for those projects. So rather than have you guys approve a number that could fluctuate, we want to get better estimates and then bring that forward to you for that.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask this, but on the roof project, do we have, I can't remember, do we have firm commitments from contractors for what it's going to cost?
Yes.
I only, okay, good, because I just am worried about inflation.
No, so the number, we'd already gone out to bid.
Right.
So the number you approved was the number that we thought was going to be finally sort of awarded, and it was.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So we have, I've already done the letter of intent, so there are, right, so we are good to go. So we did take an increase. We could probably take, if we hadn't bid it, we probably would be looking at an even larger increase, but it did go out to bid, and the bid opening was actually the first week in February.
Okay.
So we went out to bid in January.
Excellent.
Yeah, so, you know, it's one of those things that gets a little like, you know, what comes first, but if we didn't go out and bid it now, there's no way we could have done it this summer. So it's obviously, it's a letter of intent contingent on us getting funding, but I think we're far enough in the process now that we feel comfortable that hopefully it's going to happen, but that's just part of the working in the municipality world. We always like to just, you know, thank the support of our community, which actually greatly supplements what we do with our operating budget. And so far today, we've received gifts from DSEF, the Mudge Foundation, boosters, FOPA, Positive, PTO, Needham Bank, Looters, and a few other company and private donations. So we just feel like that's such an important part of making our complete budget that we also, at least annually in this format, we like to thank all those who have supported the Dover Sherburne schools here at the region. And then again, the largest group of people that I think are the community members, because as I refreshed your memory, how much we do rely on the assessments from Dover and Sherburne to fund everything that we do here.
Thank you. All right. I don't know if there are any questions from the community.
Community, do you have any questions?
From the community? Okay, then I will close the public hearing portion of the budget hearing. Dawn, thank you as always for making that so clear.
My pleasure.
And now we can open it up to more questions from the school committee. I know we've seen this before, we've had a chance to ask, but are there any further clarification questions for Dawn?
It's a general question that I know was answered in previous meetings, and I just don't remember what the answer was, but, you know, and Maggie had pointed this out before. I noticed, you know, we're sitting in a French classroom slash library slash conference room. Where does sort of the larger, you know, facilities kind of need and plan fit into this process?
So what we would do in that respect is, and it's probably do with a space feasibility analysis, and so that would be something that we'd be able to fund in our operating budget to sort of put forward a plan of what we need to do. So I think as things settle down, we'd actually talked about doing something similar to that before COVID sort of hit, and so everything's sort of been put on hold. I'd actually even, we researched a little bit of that when Bill McCall of it was here. So it's definitely been on and off of our radar for various reasons, though. The middle school wasn't on that radar the first time. It was Linkwes Commons and athletic storage, so, but it's very much a common practice to do a space study, and so that's something that we could put forward to find firms that do that and get that set up for, you know, the summer, early fall. I think, too, is the scheduling, I mean, there's a lot that goes into it. We're not seeing any more students here than we've seen in the past, it's just different uses of the space, and so I think that's where we just need to get creative, too. Obviously, look at the vastness of this space and how do you sort of use the space that you do have. So I think it's two-pronged, but it's definitely something that, once we settle down a little bit, we can, there are groups out there that that's what they do, and we can engage them to do that for us. So I took, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, I would love to see us do that, especially in the context of, as, you know, Beth, you know, takes the reins and we sort of look again at that 21st century graduate, and we look at what does that mean for courses that we're offering and project-based learning, because I do feel like that might impact the kinds of spaces that we need or the kinds of things we need in the spaces.
Right.
And I'd love to start answering those questions before, like, we come up with new curriculum and we have nowhere to put it, if that makes sense.
Right, right. And I think that's a little bit of the lab that's in the budget at the high school, you know, sort of the technologies change, but how it needs to be installed in the room. It's not just the rows and rows of computers anymore, right? So I think that as, you know, and we don't, I don't think we have any, we have no language labs anymore. Those have all been disassembled and are gone now. So we've been doing that a little bit, but I'm sure there's greater strides to be taken on that note.
So I was going to say, in a previous district, I worked on a facility master plan, and what it is, is just as you said, bringing stakeholders together to talk about, you know, 21st century education, look at, you know, space usage, get input from your educational leaders, you know, your students, your community, and it's expensive. I mean, obviously, it depends on the size of a district, but it's well worth it as far as having your capital planning or, I mean, you've done an excellent job actually, you know, with your.
Our 20-year plan, yeah.
I love that onsite insight report.
Right, it's definitely our roadmap.
Yeah, and I would love it if, as we come up with an extra strategic plan, we're also planning for, like, what kinds of spaces or, you know.
Yeah, so innovative spaces is actually in our current strategic plan to continuously, so that has to do with, I think, some of the grants that we've written with DSEF to change what's in a classroom, and we have been pretty, some of the grants, and I know industrial tech at the high school, you know, has been innovative in that, the 3D shop bop thing and whatever, yeah. So I think that hopefully we can focus on what is going to bring us forward with is just trying to keep the place in business, which will be refreshing, refreshing change, right? So we've put a lot of things on hold that we're excited to bring out of the freezer.
I had an opportunity to look at some of the newer high schools that had been built, and especially when I think of going over to a Dover Sherburne high school, you see the kids already gravitating to that common space, what they're going to be doing, you know, in their, you know, college plans. So it is really interesting to look at this generation, or a beautiful library, but digital media centers. So it really is changing very quickly.
Well, thank you. Any other questions for Dawn? Thank you. Okay, well then, that case, Maggie, right? We need to vote to certify the budget for fiscal year '23. So I would like to invite motion to adopt the FY '23 budget in the amount of $27,023,081 as presented in the packet, details of which will be documented in the minutes and we have here.
We previewed, so you have to read the whole motion.
Which is reduced by the estimate receipts, that whole one?
Yes, yeah. So that's your motion that you take, and then, actually, my treasurer's already working on the letters that will go out to the towns tomorrow to certify the budget so they know that that's what has been approved tonight.
So moved.
Does she have to read the whole thing out?
No, no.
No, that's why I, that's why I, yeah. I mean, I can, if you want.
Seriously.
Okay, so Lynn, thank you. Second?
Maggie Sharon, second.
Maggie, second, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Oh, I don't need to roll call, we're in person. Is that true?
You don't have to remember your names.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we move directly to the next motion.
Motion, yeah.
Yeah, I would like to invite emotion to approve the utilization of $110,000 of June 30th, 2021 Certified Access and Deficiency Funds for the FY '23 budget.
Angie Johnson, so moved.
Thank you.
Judy Miller, second.
Thank you, Judy. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Great. So you have in your packet the rest of the dates, just so you can keep track as we continue, but your work is done, now it's on to the towns.
Dawn.
This is really your work.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
People's work, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to superintendents.
Thank you. Chairperson, I appreciate that. I want to start by talking about a message that I sent out last week, and I'm sure you're watching as I am, and a communication was sent to the community on the heartbreaking violence and conflict happening to the Ukrainian people and their homeland. Our message talked about our school community supporting our students, our staff, our entire community through empathy, through guidance and counseling if needed, and through teachable moments, obviously depending on the grade level, you know, of our students. We were commenting today that it appears like a different world when kids are able to put on a TV or however they're getting information, from our littlest children to our oldest children at high school and seeing what's unfolding before our very eyes. So we did receive phone calls. I was pleased that the message brought a number of parents and community members seeking assistance with the principals and the schools, our teachers. We continue to, again, do the best we can to provide information and to work with our staff to really inform those teachable moments. As far as the optional mask rollout, it appears to be a non-issue, so I made sure yesterday, I spoke immediately to Dr. Brown at Pine Hill, and, you know, she really was surprised. She said to me, "It almost looked like a 90-10 split. I'm actually going there first thing tomorrow morning." And she said, it was, you know, Dr. Brown, she said, "I actually could see the kids who had lost teeth." She said, you know, "We could see their smiles." She said, "It was just great. It was just really uplifting." I then came over here to the middle school and to the high school, and honestly, you could see a group of students as I was talking about your high school where they're congregating, they're working together. Couple of kids had masks on, others didn't. I went into your shop classes. Kids were just, again, they were involved in their academics, in their socialization. I was over to Linkwes Commons for the eighth grade middle school lunch, which was exceptionally organized. Kids really, I've been a middle school teacher, remember, and I don't know if it's the maturity at this point of your eighth graders getting ready for high school, but again, a lot of socialization, it just felt like such a really good atmosphere. You have to talk to both Dr. Tiano and Principal Smith, and that's why I'm labeling it a non-issue. I went over to Chickering, and again, you'll see little kids in the halls, coming down the halls without their masks, others on the respect the choice, you know, all over the corridors, you know, in the halls, you know, in the message board, but I really have to give credit to, again, our students, our staff. I spoke to a teacher overseeing lunch duty at Linkwes Commons in the middle school, and she said, you know, again, "I have to model for my students. There are times if a student is masked and I'm going up to work in a closer environment, I immediately put my mask on." And we were actually having this conversation, you know, I find myself, again, you know, going into, I probably can't name places, but to get a cup of tea, and, you know, you'll look at the staff masked, you know, I put my mask on when I'm in there out of respect for, I know it's all about choice, and I understand that, but like I said, I just think people deserve credit, we're trying so hard to move on. So I don't know if you have any questions about that, or, I did hear at Chickering, they were talking about a couple of buses pulled up with almost every student masked and another bus showing up with hardly any students masked. So it's just, there's no rhyme or reason, I'm not going to collect data on it at this point, you know, kids could have it on for one class, off at another class. So again, it's, we will continue to work with, you know, our team, which is our nurses, our nurse supervisor, our health and advisory, and we will watch, we have very, very low positivity rates, which you're seeing all over. It's obviously dropped dramatically. That does not mean it's completely gone. So, you know, we'll continue to work with the mitigation strategies that we have in place, hopefully, again, you know, the better weather coming in, you know, the opportunities for kids to be, you know, outside, and again, I'm very hopeful that we're going to be able to remain because of the things that we have done, you know, so well here. So a couple of other updates, the communications project, I did update you at the joint school committee meeting. I have met with Dana Lanham last week. We are already working on looking at, again, survey, district progress report, looking at different websites, newsletter format, so we're trying to, again, be very careful with the timeline. What's that saying? We want to, is it not over promise? What am I trying to say?
Under promise, under deliver.
Under promise, over deliver, that's exactly right. So I'm very hopeful by the end we're going to, again, you know, come up with, and I'll give you a better timeline about what we're expecting. I also had a meeting on Friday with the Collins Center on the, I'm calling it the central office review, we talked about, you know, HR audit. We have a three-member team, Dr. Ray Sharliff, who I'm very familiar with, I've worked with on a number of projects, you know, out of the Collins Center and other, the Rennie Center, very highly thought of, Dr. Ian Wilson, who was a superintendent in Sudbury, she was new to me but is local, and Heather Mashad, who is coming from Connecticut, is a researcher. She has been the one that reached out to me just today to give us quite a bit of work to prepare, as you can imagine, I know, I don't even dare say this right now. We've been working very hard, but, you know, I'm hopeful, again, that this will be a process for us that is reflective and, again, we'll be able to make recommendations, you know, to you probably before, hopefully before the end of June. They're coming in right away, and we're going to be starting the process. I was so proud, and I know I put this in your packet, and I hope you had a chance to look at it, I know you're very busy, but, so I am part of what they call a superintendent emeritus with the Education Research Development Institute, and I've done this for a number of years, this is my first time being a superintendent emeritus, and it was the first time I traveled in forever, and it was back in November, a Saturday, Sunday, Monday, work every one of the days, and we actually ended up putting together a, what we're calling a position paper. They're unveiling it to the education community in the next couple of weeks. I'm actually attending a webinar, I believe, next Friday. So I'm so proud to be in the company, and I was proud, it says Dover Sherburne School District, Massachusetts, in the company of superintendents from Arizona, Tennessee, California, Washington, Oregon, Georgia, South Carolina, and especially with your equity audit. The part that I actually worked on, because again, this was kind of a group effort, and was really trying and was really trying to engage the stakeholders. And my job was actually working with school boards and school committees and talking about how we bring the groups together, make sure they're well-informed, really looking at some of the things that we're doing right now. I mean, we're in the initial stages of the work here. So I hope to be able to put this up on the website, and I hope you get a chance to read it. It's systems leadership for equity. So, let me see, what else? I'm also going to be attending on Friday, and somehow my name was off the list, and this is what happens when an interim comes in. But there is a Metco Leadership Retreat Conference, and I believe it's something very new that they have not done before. They're bringing superintendents from Metco districts. It's at Gillette Stadium, and I am going to be attending an all-day, they're calling it a retreat. So I think it's looking at practices. Look, I think there are some changes also in our students and applications and making sure that, you know, they are part of our community. I think, actually, more fun, I have to tell you that I had kept saying that I wanted to get over to the middle school and stop in in the mornings. You know that our Metco students for the region come here a little bit earlier. And so I went and got a couple of trays. I called Monique, and I would have been happy to get donuts and sugar. And she said, no, no, bagels and something a little healthier, if you consider that healthier. And I brought them in, and you can imagine, you know, the young girls here were very willing to talk, to share. I got lots of information. And then, of course, the guys were doing video games. They were doing their own thing, but I busted in on that, too. And, you know, had a great conversation, you know, something I probably should have done a long time ago, and I'm going to try to get myself over here, you know, often to, you know, to hear how the students. But I have to tell you this, and I'm not sure if they, you know, I introduced myself, but their experiences here have been very positive. They talk about their friends. They do talk about, you know, the travel, you know, that are trying to get back for events that they want to take part in. Never mind COVID right now with other things I know that you have had in place for years, you know, host families and opportunities. So you do have, again, the group of young people that I spoke to are excited about the opportunity. They talk about their grades. They talk about their academic achievement. They talk about their friends. And it really was a good feeling. Last Friday, I also, and I want to thank the Positive Parent Group from your middle school. I had asked that I join them in one of their meetings. And a lot of it was conversation, and they had an agenda ahead of time. And I want to thank, it's Laurie Johnson and Karen Hassar. Am I saying that right? Laurie Johnson really was the moderator. We probably had, I want to say about twenty, twenty-five parents, you know, on board. It was obviously a Zoom meeting. I would love to have an opportunity to meet them in person. But we talk about communication on school incidents. We talked about real things that happened this year. You know, how we communicate, how we make determination, you know, how the principal and the superintendent, you can be reflective on your practices also. Our goal is to certainly communicate in the best interest of all of our students, you know, what is happening in our schools. We talked about, they asked a lot about safety protocols and drills, which we, again, had started to do in January, and we've had a couple of things that have happened, and we are meeting with the police chiefs. We have, you know, drills that, that, again, Dr. Keo and his team had started, had reviewed your manuals, and like everything else, we had a halt on a number of these things. So we are continuing to do that in the spring. I'll keep you updated on the drills. They also talked about, and I was really proud, looking at your budget presentation, they talked about how do we support, you know, social emotional learning? How do we get additional counselors? You know, how, and really, I was pleased to tell them that this was part of our budgeting process, you know, as we come out of COVID and continue to support the needs of our young people. So thank you. It was very enjoyable. It was respectful. It was, you know, really healthy conversation. And the other thing I will share from our planning with our joint chairs, so this has come up in a number of things, so upcoming meetings, I'm happy to say we're going to be talking about sustainability. I think you took that over for Dr. Keo when he left again, Dawn. We talked about school start times. So, you know, I can't tell you, and we were talking about this today in our executive team meeting, we will come back with some of the information that we would consider good data that we can share with you for this year, but certainly a plan going into next year so that we can, and I know that was a promise with your steering committee, with your task forces, so we'll be prepared to talk about that. And the last thing is, I did have conversation today with Dorothy Presser from MASC Field Representative. She's very happy to come back here. So we had talked about your April meetings. And one of the things you do during those meetings routinely is evaluate your superintendent preparation, your, obviously, your goal setting would have been done, but updates. So she has given me a couple of dates. She's not able to do that April fifth date, but she gave me some other dates in April and/or May where she can come on board for our entire committee, for those that want to, especially with you bringing your new superintendent on board. You know, to have, you know, that processes ready, you know, talk about your goal setting, you know, talk about how you actually make that evaluation process you know, positive for making sure the school committee gets the information they need with evidence, and at the same time, the community can, you know, see the work of the superintendent.
I'd recommend you do it after the election, so you capture all the new people as one cohesive team.
That's a good idea. So later May.
She's got all kinds of dates, so I will get back to her and.
And we have a manual that we use that you can, you know, probably resurrect. We were really into it, but we just never really had a gone into a routine of being able to use it. But because it is something that you've got to do all year long. And so if you give them the manual, we gave them the manual in the fall with the goals. And it gave you a place to put evidence so you could, everyone likes to do everything electronically, but it was pockets where you could sort of then, stuff from school committee meetings, other meetings that you had, capture that all year long. So you weren't there in April going, oh, my God, what, you know? So it's a year-long process. And if you do it right, I don't know if they still have the mid-year. But then that was, you know, I know we did mid-year a couple of times, mid-year evaluation, so that allowed, that sort of gave you a really good head start for your, the final one, so.
Yeah, but that tool you're talking about was really good.
Yep.
I am still someone who likes to write things down, but yeah, as we go through to collect.
Exactly.
I think that our committees have gotten a little, well, let me say this. I have fallen down on the job in terms of what committees and what committee work I'm supposed to be doing. We have an evaluation, a superintendent evaluation committee. Are we?
We don't have to do anything with that this year.
Right, we haven't met on that.
After the election, we'll have to re-sign.
But that's the group. We put the tool together.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that group in.
Right. So in the fall, then, then, yeah, because I think we haven't done it in a while. Did we do it at the end of the year, you know, that Andrew was here? I don't believe.
No, because he was leaving.
Not the last year.
He was leaving.
Yeah, because he's leaving, and we haven't done it this year.
Right.
So it would be really a good thing to not just resurrect it, but maybe do some norm setting around it and, and, you know, because, and what tips this off to me is having done Beth's contract, there was a piece in there that talks about before July first, we each year will set goals with her. And is that, and we've got to do that this year, you know, before July first, and you know, is that part, that should be part of that process as well.
But that's her starting date, isn't it?
Yeah, her starting date.
It is, but you, so that, so that when you start the year, you know what you're doing. Versus, we did, we put that in a couple of contracts ago, because before you waited till, if you waited till the fall, if you think about it, the summer is when we get everything up and running. So if you don't have your goals before the summer, then you're sort of like starting.
And I, and I actually think we could do it in June because Beth's here. It's not like we've got someone coming from someplace else and they're not really working. I mean, you know, she's on the payroll regardless, you know what I mean? It's just, it would be a really good sort of planning tool, and it would be something, it'd be good to get a process and get norms around it so that as we go forward, we'll, you know, we'll have structure in place, you know?
I think, yeah.
Is that what Dorothy is, oh, sorry.
Well, I was just going to say the same thing.
Explain, because we had her come when the new superintendent evaluation came out. She came and did a meeting for, it was a long time ago.
No.
It was, it was a while ago, dating myself. But she came to, like, let us better understand it and walk through how you do it, but then she could also give instructions like that. She's worked with you guys on norms then, so she could, she could help with that.
So you have, you have new members, and as Dawn said, there could be, and there will be. I know there are a number of your members, you know, not seeking reelection. So there will be new members. And we can talk about charting the course, but some of the things they talk about, I pulled it this evening to kind of review it myself. And they have, making the most of the opportunity, organizing the process, putting goals at the center, assessing progress and performance, and deciding and reporting, you know, ratings, which at the end is obviously required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary. And then the other thing that I'm going to say is, you're a high-performing district. Everybody goes through a process of a district review, and these are things that they're going to look at. So they want to make sure the process is in place, the, you know, the committee, and you've got sixteen members that are evaluating. The other thing, while I understand, you know, and we're very fortunate, Beth is here, you know, somebody that's been part of the work with your strategic planning. She will go through, and I know you know this, very quickly, the second week in July is the new superintendent induction program. They do an excellent job. A lot of that is their transitioning, you know, meeting with stakeholders, you know, looking at your strategic plans, seeing if those goals are the goals that are your priority goals going forward. So I think you, again, you're, the time is right. At one point, Dorothy had talked about the summer, and you seem to be a some, a group that, again, not everybody's here in the summer.
Late May or early June is better.
Yeah. So that's probably a really good plan. And that is my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Just a huge thank you to you, all of you, for all the work that went into the flexible masking, respect the choice, social norming, and also just the support to get to this point. Our school was also on March seventh, and it's been really exciting to both see kids for the first time and also just to see a norm where it's okay if you're wearing a mask, it's okay if you're not wearing a mask. We just, you know, we kind of go with it, and I think that's really a path for us. It just feels really good. So thank you. It was kind of a lot of work, I'm sure.
Before I came here this evening, I probably had one of the best hours I have spent in forever, and you're going to wonder about my life when I tell you this. So I spent an hour over at your gym. I had gone to see the boys play a couple of weeks ago, and your girls and your boys are playing this evening as we sit here. The girls did win, they're in the championship. But when you talk about the unmasking, even in the gym, you had some adults in there that were masked. I had a couple sitting around me. You know, kids, you know, people, it just felt good. People were enjoying themselves, doing what they should be doing, enjoying the high school experience, and I can't tell you how much fun it was. I was mentioning, you had a little one who was not one of your high school students. He was absolutely, and he was sitting beside your Raider, who was very well dressed, your mascot. But this little boy had, he was the best cheerleader I've ever seen. If you can watch it, honestly, it is the funniest little thing I've ever seen. He just was out there cheering, telling the refs what they were, it was very funny, very respectful.
Good.
But he knew his basketball. So it was just great. I loved it.
And that Raider costume is, is new from the boosters. So I don't know who's wearing it this evening, but.
Well, he was having, he was ready, he had his sword, his colors. It was great. It was very nice.
Yeah, I've been asking my boys, you know, how was it with mask optional? And, you know, it was, they were excited, but it was amazing how quickly they were just, it's normal, like, just how fast. I, I just, I, I expected more detail, but they were definitely happier.
Nash is happy. I have, my weight is not, because he doesn't go here. He's not.
He's still.
They perhaps may let them after spring break.
Okay.
Maybe.
Well.
Maybe not.
We have, I have a student who, who was continuing to wear, you know, masks as chin strap. You know, what's, what's going on? And they said, you know, I'm just so used to the feeling of the hair that if I don't have it on, it makes me feel like this, so I've just been leaving it down. I said, oh, my goodness.
That's funny. Well, it's been a while. My son Jack joked that he was going from mask to face shield. He didn't feel like he could go. He was joking.
He could go like full bare face.
I've got, I've got a lot of face shields left over anyway. What's that made you do?
I do, too. Yes. So many face shields.
Yes, well, it's a good place to be, knock on wood. All right. Thank you, Dawn.
A warrant report, so your monthly warrant report. And Judy, whenever you're free to stop in, we do have a folder for you. And so it's, we're continuing on. A good thing about the warrant reports is that hopefully by March twenty first, I put in my financial report that I finally found the accounts, a business office associate, accounts payable person. So I won't be doing these warrants anymore, hopefully soon. So that's, that's great news on that front. So that will roll me right into your monthly report, which you will see there's actually a little bit of, quite, quite a bit of bold this month. It's not necessarily new news up in the revenue, because we've talked about this now. It's just, it's the first time it's in your written reports. The current statement does reflect the return to the towns. So you will see that your assessment column looks like there's negative variance, but remember, that's not because they're not paying what they owe. That's just the give back. So at the very bottom of your revenue statement, I'm showing you what the net, the net results of revenue is in disregarding the E and D give back, right? So it's not a negative five hundred and sixty-four thousand. It's really positive seventy-eight thousand. So I'll keep that number running, but it is how it flows through our financial statements is to give back the money as a reduction in assessments. Chapter seventy, staying the same. So chapter seventy-one, this is the first time you've seen it on your financial statements that we're actually recording the projected variance. It will, it could potentially creep up even more once we get the June payment. Again, they're looking at an eighty percent reimbursement rate. I read something actually before I came to this meeting tonight, that it may end up being closer to ninety-one percent. So there could be another ten percent that we get. It's always, we really don't always know because sometimes they have to pay, like, you remember, I don't know if you remember, but the one year, my first year here, the E, the end of the year report had been filed by the previous administration incorrectly. And so we had to go file an amendment, and you don't get that money till June. So you don't know what's happening out there, so that's why you don't know exactly what you're going to get. But it, my guess is we're going to see even more, a little bit more than the hundred and nine thousand dollars. I did make the change to bank interest, because I had time to sit back and reflect, and like, the interest rates are so bad. And if you remember, we used to have some really good rates on some CDs, which has evaporated. And so we are going to see a negative variance in, in bank interest. So we're holding our own right now, but the bank interest is like point, it's really low. So we're not, we're not gathering as much interest income as we have in the past. So that is your revenue. On the salary side, we've had a lot of leave of absences, you know, not non-COVID related, maternity leave, some other medical leaves. And so as those employees either say they're coming back or tell us they're not coming back, that's when the salary variance blows out. It normally is almost transparent to you, because it, it doesn't, it happens in dribbles. We had a lot happen since the last month that we reported, and so you're going to see an increase in the positive variance in your educating, educator line items, both in, it's regular, it's really in the teacher classroom, regular ed line. But that's, that's from, we didn't let anyone go. It's just that we're realizing the savings from those leaves. But it helps balance out your negative variance and your substitute line item. Because obviously, if someone's not here, we have to pay for someone to be here. And so a little bit of that is actually eaten by that line item, which is what we highlight in your report. Again, the report notice announces that we have filled the vacancy in the business office. However, we are still continuing to look for custodial positions. We have brought in a contractor to fill those spots to take the pressure off the guys who were doing overtime to make up for the missing pieces. So we are doing that both, both schools here and also at Chickering. So we're not alone here. It's also Chickering. Pine Hill is the only school that's fully staffed. But it was worth our while to bring in the cleaners that we've brought in to sort of fill in are fabulous. We don't have them work a full eight, eight-hour day. They work a six-hour day, but it's been working out. We're continuing to hire. We've actually hired a couple of people. We just haven't been successful in keeping them. We just haven't been successful in keeping them. Um, so it's like, it's been a little bit of a revolving door, um, I will have to say. But again, we're not alone, I don't know if you're gonna find any school that's fully hired, right? So, um, we're doing our best and, again, I think when people come here and interview with us, the longevity of our employees that we do have shows that it's a great place to work. Um, and so that's a selling point, the people that we've lost isn't because of, it's just expectations of what they thought it. You know, so many people are transitioning in life, um, and I think that's what we're, we're encountering, but we're, we're staying positive. Um, and so I think that's it. We have, um, one thing we have done is we were negative, um, variance in our educational assistance. So we went back through all of our grants, we did move some positions to grants to alleviate that negative, um, variance. Um, but there is a little bit of po- additional positive surplus, because there is one EA position in fluctuation right now. The position's been filled, but they haven't been put onto payroll yet, so, um, those funds are showing up. So there is a lot of fluctuation, um, at the, at any given month, because I, I've never seen so much, uh, turn, not turnover, but transient. It's here, I mean, people are just, uh, coming up, coming and going and coming and going. Um, and again, it's at all four schools. Um, but it's actually, it, you add that burden to our payroll department, it's constantly onboarding new people and, and calculating what we owe the people who are leaving. So that, I've never seen it, um, any of my previous years of what we're encountering this year. Um, I'm really hoping that next year we'll settle down a little bit and we won't see as much, um, of the revolving door that we've seen this year. We're very fortunate though, that people who do come work for us are great with the kids and, you know, we're getting good people. It's just, um, people are making different decisions, moving, a lot of moving, uh, to different places, so we'll see how that goes. So, um, you have your financial statements, I think that still shows that, you know, every month you'll see that the a total operating positive variance is going down. We don't encumber everything that we're going to incur, so we're continuing to spend down. Um, what we'll do now, once the budget process is behind us, we'll now spend time on fiscal year twenty-two and go in and start trying to do real projections for you, so we know where we'll stand, um, come June. And I think the rest of it is not bold, so, um, again, I, I mentioned during the budget presentation that these statements do, uh, reflect an encumbrance of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for your OPEP contribution. So we'll wait till June to make that contribution, we do it once and we'll grab all the, see, anything we have left in the healthcare accounts, we will actually contribute to the OPEP. Oh, one other thing I wanted to say. So, um, we are getting ready to kick off the spring athletic season. If you recall last year, I, I don't remember if we talked about it here, but you've might have, might have heard, we're at tennis, so we're talking tennis. Um, obviously tennis is a small team, right? Seven, seven people sort of play in a match and you usually carry ten on a team. We had, um, an extra group of boys last year that rather than cut, we sort of did a little, um, volunteer where they sort of practiced with the team, they got to play some matches, so we kept them engaged, but we didn't really form a JV team. We're seeing the same numbers this year, but we're also seeing those numbers in the girls. So Emily and I, um, and she's been in consultation with, um, John Smith as well, met on Friday. And we want to keep those participants involved. So if we have at least, um, seven, um, people left to form a JV team in both girls and boys, or there is a possibility of doing a co-ed if we don't have, uh, we are going to assess those students who want to play JV tennis, the three hundred dollar fee. We're gonna put it in the athletic revolving funds. And she's got potential people who are willing to, um, be the coach of this team. It's a much more abbreviated season, because a lot of the districts don't have JV teams. So there'll be some tournament, there'll be some matches, but then they'll, they'll probably do a mini tournament. So they'll get the experience. Um, we have both a, a, a boys coach and a girls coach who are willing to come in and do it at whatever fees that we collect. Um, as you know, tennis, there's not additional cost for our schools, so there wouldn't be, um, a hit to our operating budget. So we want to do that for this spring. Again, if you've known in the past, say indoor track and you're, you're swimming, we watch what the numbers do. If those continue, then we'll probably bring forward, not next fall, but the following fall, um, the position to come into appendix C and make it a formal, um, you know, JV team going forward. I think we see every so, every once in a while, you see shifts. Um, so track, if you remember, used to be like two hundred people. Uh, she's looking at probably less than a hundred this year, so, um, right? So that's, everything fluctuates a little bit. If you remember too, when indoor track started, it does sort of take away from some of the other sports. Definitely Nordic ski sort of saw decrease because of that. So it ebbs and flows, I think, with the cohort that's coming through, what the kids are interested in. Um, but it's a great building base for the tennis team. If we get the JV going, get that, um, you know, their skills get there, so then they can sort of move up to varsity. So, uh, that's our plan, if, if that's acceptable. Um, so you guys are, again, we're running through the athletic revolving, so it's not impacting the general fund.
That seems reasonable. Do you have enough court space?
Yeah, so the both towns have agreed to let us use their courts for free.
Oh, that makes.
From four to six. And they won't practice five days a week, they'll probably practice three days a week.
Great.
Um, from four to six. And so, uh, Emily's already secured the courts, both in Sherburne and Dover.
And that we don't have to do transportation, they just get there themselves.
Exactly, which is what they do for, you know, some of the other sports.
Yeah, I think it's great to, if we have a way to keep them engaged. For them, yeah.
Perfect, okay. She will move forward with that and we'll see how it goes, um, after tryouts and who wants to stay, you know, who wants to stay around. She did, she, a couple of the students, um, actually said they only wanted to play if they could play JV. So it's almost like a club intermural, right, versus the pressure of.
It's a nice way to try it out.
Exactly, exactly. So we will make that happen, as long as, if there's participation.
That's great.
Good, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, that moves us on to our annual vote on mass school choice law. Um, I don't know, Superintendent Smith, if you wanted to say anything about that, or I?
Sure, um, well, the, uh, mass general law, chapter seventy-six, section twelve, requires local school committees to vote annually as to whether or not the district will participate in school choice. Do you want to speak about historically?
We have historically voted not to participate and, um, my understanding is primarily just because we're such a small district to keep our class sizes small.
Capacity, right.
Capacity.
And the reimbursement for participation is far below what our cost per pupil is.
Right.
Um, some districts use this as a way to fund their budget, um, we don't, we don't. So our students though can choice out.
Right.
Um, but we don't choice in.
Right, so it doesn't prevent someone from going to another district.
Correct.
Do we have any children right now that choose to do that?
That are school choice out? Yeah, I think we have one or two. It fluctuates so much, we normally don't, like I, you know, don't get that data, but I just looked at the, um, they report, um, the attendance, the school choice register. And so I, I'm pretty sure, I think we have someone in Holliston, believe it is. And we've had someone in Natick.
Yep.
Uh, for many years too, so.
Does, um, do we, the district, pay the per pupil cost to send them?
We pay, you pay five thousand dollars, it might be a little bit more than that, but it's a mo- it's a nominal, um, expense, right? So whatever they get is what we pay.
It's the same for like Norfolk, for Aggie and Minuteman.
That's different.
Different.
No, that's different, those are vocational schools, which the towns pay for, those aren't in our budgets. Um, and so vocational schools will depend on whether you're a member or a non-member. So like Dover is a Minuteman, Sherburne's in, um, Tri-County. We have kids go both, but you know, you pay, it doesn't matter, it's Dover, Sherburne, it's where you live.
And can anybody go to Aggie?
Uh, Norfolk, anyone go to Aggie, but they still have a member and a non-member, it's Norfolk County, right? So, um, it's really inexpensive if you're a member, I believe it's forty-five hundred dollars. If you're not a member, it's twenty-four thousand dollars.
Wow. Wow.
Yeah.
It's a big difference.
Yeah.
Some of those programs don't get a lot of press, because people just think DS. But for particular students who have an interest, you know, one of my daughters used to ride and many of the kids at her barn went to Aggie and got like really incredible education.
Well, Minuteman, so they, you know, Dover stayed in Minuteman and is paying a little extra, because we don't always have minimum four students there. But they just sent out there, it's almost like a college, they just sent out their, um, en- enroll, their application statistics and they are so oversubscribed. So not even member towns will probably get all their applicants in, it was almost double.
What, um, is it a lottery if they're oversubscribed, or is it the application prop, like is it like?
They go, you have to apply into the different programs. And so I do think they look at it from a qualification standpoint, who they think can succeed. So I don't think it's lottery, I think it's, it's basically application driven.
Did a beekeeping class at the Aggie. It was very difficult, it was hard. It was just a night thing and I was like, I think I'm going to fail. Well, Lynn is also a new beekeeper.
That's right, you are.
Yes, we, we discovered. Liz Grossman. Yeah.
Small towns.
But when you look at the, so it's good to bring that up, though, when you look at both town budgets, you're gonna see a line item for the vocational schools. Sometimes they do it by the school. I've gotten Dover to expand theirs a little bit, because what we found is if we had someone go, from Dover, go to say Tri-County, they didn't have a line item. They didn't have a place to transfer those funds to. So, um, hopefully when we see their article four this year, it's gonna just say vocational schools. So it's more liberal for them to be able to reserve, to put reserve funds in when we have the unexpected, um, you know, students go to schools that we're not a member of and they don't have anything budgeted for, so.
Didn't Minuteman do a big redo, haven't they, they did a whole?
It's gorgeous.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, so Dover, a lot of towns left because of the capital investment on the new project. But, but Dover stayed in and, uh, you know, one of the reasons we stayed in is because they said, we're gonna get to be a, a really popular school. And if you're not a member, you're probably not even gonna get anywhere near to be able to have a seat in that school. Um, and so, you know, we, obviously Ford Spalding here in town was the head of the building committee. And, um, both school committees came together at the time, both the region and Dover, to support Dover staying in Minuteman. I think it was a great, uh, decision, uh, to stay part of it. Um, and then we, we have had several, uh, students apply this year, hopefully they're the ones who get some of the hundred and seventy-five seats that are available.
I just, I think about like that twenty-first century learning and getting something that you're passionate about and, you know, not, not every child loves all the very deep academics. And this is being able to provide them in our community with like a really high quality education that allows you to do stuff when you graduate, it's really.
They do great PR if you can get on their, um, mailing list. I think I'm on their, my, on the mailing list, because I used to be on Dover's school committee. But the email that went out this week was about the applications, but also one of their former students was just on, uh, Beat Bobby Fly. Uh, so, I mean, it's amazing to see, you know, they, those kids do great things. And they, a lot of them go on to college, it's not just a vocational school where you're gonna leave and go on. Um, I would, I would say their number's pretty high of who goes on.
And the colleges that give into our excellent schools, a lot of engineering programs, a lot of technical programs.
Yeah.
Um, my, my nephew graduated from Minuteman, went to Bonn Carlys, now he's got an excellent job at Hanscom Air Force Base doing airport things, I, I don't know.
Right near Minuteman, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, doing really well, gets a lot of time in the private jets, which is really enjoyable.
The state and the governor has made a big investment, along with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, into your technical and career vocational schools. So when you talk about the upgrades, um, it's important business is supporting them.
Yeah.
School choice vote.
Very good, yes, no, that's all important stuff. Um, okay, any further discussion or questions on school choice? Okay, um, then I would like to invite a motion to have the Dover Sherburne Regional Schools not participate in school choi- in the school choice program for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year.
So I'm moved.
Thank you, Judy.
One second.
Lynn, thank you, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great. Um, on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes from February first and sixteenth. And donations of, I thought I had this. Uh, donation for the Dover Sherburne Varsity Field Hockey Volunteer, Tom McGill. And a donation from the Mudge Fund for auditorium light board replacement.
So that was it, uh, Jeff Herman reached out that the lighting board was, uh, in, uh, starting to fail and he didn't want it to ruin any, um, shows. And so we directly reached out to Mudge just on that one project and they were able to meet and, and bring the check right over, so.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
That's great, but I know that's a big passion of, of theirs, the auditorium, obviously.
It's a, it's a really nice, uh, way to be able to take care of that, so, we're very thankful.
Now that we have shows live coming up, so exciting. Um, any questions about the consent agenda? Okay, then I'd like to invite a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Maggie Sharon, so moved. Second, Angie Johnson.
Thank you, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Super. And that just leaves communication that's in your packet. Um, from Mr. Smith and Dr. Chiano, Shroom School Committee Minutes. And then, is May third our next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have anything in April.
So far away.
I know.
Don't we have to leave a joint?
Yeah, big joint.
Two scheduled for April right now.
Excuse me?
Two joint meetings, April fifth and April twenty-sixth.
I didn't think we would get off with, you know.
No, but that just, when I, when I just read that, it seemed like.
I know.
Wow.
I think that's to give everyone a break. Uh, and there's not a lot to, I mean, with the budget done now, we just have to wait for the towns to do their pieces. So if anything comes up, uh, obviously, we'll let you know on the financial end.
Great, I, I just want to make like two very brief comments on the two principal reports. One was a huge, I was hugely impressed to read about the Paralympic, um, unit in the PE department. Um, just like really impressed at, I'm sure a lot of work went into redesigning that unit and just the inclusive nature of it. And just want to say thank you to everybody in the PE department for doing that.
Yeah.
As you may know, I have a daughter with a physical disability and she, you know, was, had some challenges in middle school in PE when she was a student here, and to see that program coming here means a ton, personally and just for the community. Um, and selfishly, I am so excited that we are done with masks, because next week will be the very first musical on the stage with no masks, normal town in like three years.
Three years.
So, thank you, thank you, thank you, I am so excited. You know, my last child, ten years of being a drama parent, I really appreciate it.
I got my tickets.
I was just gonna say, give a plug for the production.
Yes, go, go watch Beauty and the Beast next week. That's how you wanna spend St. Patrick's Day, you can go three times, six-thirty, seven-thirty, seven-thirty, there's a matinee on Saturday. All weekend, get your tickets, ticketstage.com.
Very excited, and we had the Chocolate Cafe, I wasn't in town this weekend.
It was phenomenal.
That's what I heard.
Yummy, I saw, I saw the postings, I was like, oh.
Yeah, and I loved the, I think they did it for spacing, but they did the performing this time in the auditorium. And all the eating in the, in the.
And you could actually hear them.
Yes, it was phenomenal, because usually I feel like it's like a real fight for space between the performing groups and then people are chatting. It's kinda like, you wanted to have that feeling, but it's kind of doesn't work so good sometimes.
I think they should keep that.
I think they, I think they keep that, because people could go in and out, the doors were open, you could go sit down for a set, you could come get a snack. It was kind of cool, kids could run around, it was really well done, really, thank you to all the department people.
I thought, I was like, that's different.
It was really nice, because like, you know, I went in for the jazz beans and then I went out to get a snack and then people came in to see. That, you know, it was really just a nice vibe. Um, and yeah, I, I was there towards the end, there was still plenty of, plenty of food.
Okay, I was sorry to miss it, but.
It's a great community event, so thank you too. Yeah.
All right, I think that, that's it then, yes?
Yes.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Hello?
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Second.